I will call the October 18th, 2021 School Committee Meeting to order at 7:00.
Recording in progress.
This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You're hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so the chair may inform all other participants of said recording. The Town of Hingham is recording this meeting, and I know Harbor Media is as well. If anyone else is planning to record, if you could let me know. I see Jenna Manto from the Hingham Journal. She's also recording. I'm not seeing anyone else, so we'll move on to the approval of minutes. 2.1 is the I'll take a motion to approve the minutes of the School Committee Planning Workshop held on October 2nd, 2021.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the October 2nd Planning Session.
Well, second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Michelle?
Hi.
Jen?
Hi.
Ness?
Hi.
Carlos?
Hi.
Tim?
Hi.
Liza?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. Minutes are approved. 2.2 is approval of the minutes of the School Committee Meeting held on October 4th, 2021.
Make a motion to approve the October 4th minutes of the School Committee.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll go roll call again. Michelle?
Hi.
Jen?
Hi.
Ness?
Hi.
Tim?
Hi.
Carlos?
Hi.
Liza?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. Minutes are approved. 2.3, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes of the School Committee Meeting held on October 7th, 2021.
I make a motion to approve the School Committee Meeting minutes of October 7th.
Well, second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none. Michelle?
Hi.
Jen?
Hi.
Ness?
Hi.
Carlos? You're muted, Carlos. Carlos, can you unmute yourself?
How's that? Can you hear me? Hi.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry about that.
No problem. Tim?
Hi.
Liza?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. Minutes are approved. Next is three questions and comments. The Hingham School Committee encourages community engagement and welcomes questions and comments as agenda items are discussed at the meeting. In addition, we have set aside up to 15 minutes at the beginning of this meeting for comments or questions that fall under the purview of the School Committee and are not already on tonight's agenda. If any guest wish to speak, please raise your hands, state your name and address, and address your comments to the chairperson. Comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker and must address the topics within the scope of the responsibility of the School Committee. As established by Mass. General Laws, the responsibilities of the School Committee are to, one, select and evaluate the superintendent; two, review and approve budgets for public education in the district; and, three, establish educational goals and policies for the schools in the district. Speakers are encouraged to present their remarks in a respectful manner and to consider the privacy interests of others. The public comment period is not a time for debate or response to the comments by the School Committee. The School Committee is not adopting or endorsing any of the comments made during the public comment period. So with all of that being said, if anyone wants to make a comment, if you could just use the raise hand function. Okay, I'm not seeing any right now, so we'll move on to number four, which is the superintendent's report. Dr. Reese?
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I have a few items to report on this evening. I want to start off with probably the most, not necessarily the most important, but the most talked about item that we have on my report, which is the COVID update. So right now, we have, as of last week, we had eight students in the, actually, seven students in the district that tested positive for COVID, three at East Elementary, three at PRS, one student at Hingham High School, and one faculty member at Hingham High School. So that was a total for last week. One of the things that we are realizing with these positive student cases through contact tracing is most of these cases are infections that are coming from home, not from school. So one of the things that we want to remind parents that if you have COVID, you have conditions of COVID, please do your best to help monitor before sending your child to school. In a few of the cases that we've had, we've, students have come from home, we've tested them and sent them right back. So that'd be great if we can get that level of partnership. That'd be fantastic. There are a number of things that we're doing in the next week, next two weeks before our next School Committee Meeting, and I'll keep the School Committee up to date. And we may consider doing a community update on some of the information I'm going to share. One is the amount of close contacts that we've had and how many of those students have actually been quarantined. The numbers are low. We need to get an accurate number so we can share that with our families. The other big topic that we're working on now is data collection regarding vaccination rates for our students by school, and that is eligible upper middle school and high school students that are eligible for vaccination. We have, we are deploying a piece of software that will help us tie in directly with the state database. That is in the process of being onboarded, so we can actually get a very accurate number right directly from the state database, and that is something that we should have within the next week and a half to be able to share, and it'll be accurate by age, and it'll actually identify vaccination status. We're also working to have that number as well for teachers. That is something that's behind the scenes that we're working with the Hingham Education Association on that piece. The other piece that we're working on is how many students district-wide that we have had pool tested, and also the number of students that we've had rapid tested. We've asked CIC to actually produce a report that will identify how many students across the district have been pool tested and/or rapid tested. The numbers are high. We test hundreds of students since the beginning, and one of the things that I wanted to share with the community, I think some of our community members and committee have heard that we had three inadvertent students that were pool tested. We had actually three students that were tested, and parents had opted out of being pool tested, and that was an inadvertent mistake on the school district. We had two of those cases the first week of our pool testing model, and we had one case a week ago. So we have rectified our model on how those students are actually identified on a daily basis or weekly basis of when they get pool tested. The situation that we had was really a clerical error in transposing of students from one list to another, and that has been rectified. We are working with CIC on a number of data points that we can share with our community so they can get a really clear picture of the quantity of tests that we give within our schools. They have done a good job of helping us with this model. It is, as I said before, we test through pool testing and rapid test quite a few students on a daily basis, but the program seems to be working. Our kids are in school. We have low numbers as of last week. We had eight students that were positive last week, which is, in my view, we're in a good spot as of last week. The next thing I want to report on to the school district is relative to the Communications Director position that we had advertised. We are in the process of having interviews. We believe that in the next three weeks, we will have a new Communications Director for the district. We have some great ideas and a great model that we want to implement in the district to enhance our communications from home to school and from school to home. So we really hope that this is going to help our district to really have a new model of communicating and keeping the stakeholders of the district in tune with what's happening in the district. The next item that we have that I want to report on is the strategic plan. We put an RFP out to the state to solicit people that are interested or organizations interested in facilitating the strategic planning process. The bids closes this week. We will interview and appoint a facilitator for this strategic planning process probably later this week. So you will have a good idea of who that group will be, and we'll get going. I think that's something that I've been looking forward to since I came on, of getting this process started so we can actually meet our timeline of having a framework of a strategic plan by May and a final strategic plan by June. I think we're in a good position to actually move forward with that. So I'm excited about it. I think a number of our community stakeholders will be part of that, and many of our School Committee members will be part of that, or if not all of you will be involved. The next thing that I want, just want to make an announcement to the community, that I want to thank everyone for sending invites. I know there's a lot of meetings in Hingham. I'm trying to manage and get to all of them. Sometimes there are a lot of meetings in Hingham, and they all seem to be at 7 o'clock on every night of the week. So we're all just trying to manage that, and we'll do our best to get to them. And being that we've got a construction project on the verge of, you know, breaking, not breaking ground, but just being prepared for that breaking ground. We're just a little bit busy. But anyway, I appreciate that, and keep checking with me, and all of us will do our best to get to a lot of these commitments and being around the community. So with that said, Carrie, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you very much, and it's great news to hear the communications person is hopefully be starting soon and to get going on the strategic plan. I know we've all been eager to get going on that. Does anyone have any questions on the superintendent's report? Okay, seeing none. We have the Chair of the Select Board here tonight, Joe Fisher. Thank you for joining us, because we have a contract to approve on the agenda. Does anyone have an issue if we move that out of order and discuss 7.1 right now? Okay, seeing none. Again, thank you for being here, Joe. Liza, do you want to take this one?
So this is the collective bargaining agreement. It's a three-year agreement with Massachusetts Laborers District Council Local 1139, and these are our food service workers, and it involves 28 total staff who work in our food service. Last year, we had done a one-year rollover agreement, and so this would be a new, a three-year agreement that starts July 1, 2021, and goes through June 30th, 2024. And it was a very cordial negotiation. The School Committee has seen the memorandum of agreement in the past. Some of the issues that, just to highlight a few things that the workers agreed to, we did put in a clause about emergency work in the event we were ever faced with such a situation again. We were very fortunate that our food service workers helped the community with some meal preparation for others besides our students during the pandemic last year. So we included that again, that in the event something happened, we might require them to come in. We also changed some employee responsibilities of reporting sick leave, bereavement leaves of absences, that they would now be using electronic communication systems, which facilitates everything for everyone, for them and for us as well. And we added some unpaid personal days to commit to. And for compensation, we had to look at, the state is increasing the minimum wage in the state, and we wanted to make sure that we remain competitive for hiring these workers because they're paid hourly. And so for the food service technicians, we adapted their pay by adding a dollar amount to each of the steps for each of the years to continue increasing so that we would remain margin above the minimum wage. And then for the managers, we also increased them, and we increased them a little bit more because we want to reward the work that they did and also to incentivize the food service technicians to pursue the positions when they open up. And that, we were glad to hear that the members of the union wanted to reward their managers as well. And in the past, they had had a participation bonus for when, based on sales of the meals. And last year, for just last year, we agreed to provide them payment 1% equivalent of their salary in lieu of the rules about the participation bonus, because we had no students in the buildings having lunch, and the federal government was paying for the meals. And so that wasn't really fair to them. There would be no way for them to be able to achieve the participation bonus because the operation was completely different. And so we rewarded them for the work that they continued to do all during the pandemic. So the committee has the agreement. If, I'll make a motion, and then we can discuss. So I'll make a motion to ratify, and I will say that members of the union have already ratified the agreement. So I will make a motion to ratify the memorandum of agreement between the Hingham School Committee and the Massachusetts Laborers District Council Local 1139 for a three-year collective bargaining agreement for July 2021 through June 2024.
Thank you, Liza. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Michelle. Any discussion?
Yeah, good. Thank you. If I could just add on to what Liza said, because I know she and I talked about this during the negotiations, just a huge thank you to Kim Smith and her food service team, because they really did do so much during the pandemic, not just for students, but, Joe, I think you remember, for other folks in town. The schools were providing food for folks who needed it, especially during some of those dark days of the, early of the pandemic. So just to reiterate Liza's comments on that, we're really grateful for that.
Yeah, I agree. Joe?
Yes, thank you. So that's a great presentation. You've answered most of the questions I already had. Could you just review for me what the, what the step process is, how someone goes from step three to step four, step five, and the food services technicians, or any of the categories?
For them, it's on a yearly basis. So when they get brought in, depending on their experiences, they get brought in on the step, and then each year that they're with us, they proceed on the steps.
So.
But it incentivizes them to stay, and they become more knowledgeable, more experienced. They know the process, they know the kids, because we want to have longer-serving employees.
So I mean, this is an issue, I mean, this is something that we're looking at, not just in this agreement, but for all agreements. So just, for example, looking at the food services technicians going, looking at the step four and the step five. So as I understand the agreement, if someone is step four in fiscal year '23, and then they go to step five, right, they go from step four to step five in fiscal year '24, that increase is about 12.6%. And those. You with me?
Yeah, that'd be correct, Joe. You know, if they're in the step progression, there's a lot of people that have, you know, at the step five level. I mean, that's what we strive to get them all to that point.
Right. So as we, as we're looking at the implications of both the increases and the steps, the percentages are larger than what we typically look at when we look at staying within the step. And I mean, this is something that's being looked at on the town side as well, you know, how we do the planning for those sorts of increases. But I understand, you know, this makes a lot of sense, given the numbers here and the minimum wage adjustments that you've referred to.
Yeah, Joe, I agree with you. We have to look at the steps across the different contracts, but this one in particular, you know, we're talking about a top step of $18, $19, $20 an hour. And so 12% on that wage is much different than 12% on a teacher or an administrator wage. And we do have to stay with, you know, the state minimum wage is going to $15 an hour. And so we're tracking that to make sure that we can get the workers that we need and not lose them. So I appreciate your comment. I think we need, and we do need to look at every agreement in that context, but this agreement, we had to look at, we're looking at hourly wage. That's pretty modest, and we're very fortunate to have the staff that we have. They're very dedicated to us at these rates.
Oh, I'm with you, and I think, you know, I've, the reports that I've heard, the school's fortunate, the town's fortunate with this group of employees. So no, I'm fully supportive of this. I just, as we're looking at budgets, that's something that we're tracking.
And we have that as a goal, if you listen to us later.
Yeah, I hear you.
We do. All right, John?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I'd just like to add that, you know, food service, they did an incredible job last year, you know, keeping the program running and then gearing up to like get, you know, everybody having lunch and sort of managing that process. You know, needless to say, in the trenches there, it's very, very difficult work. And, you know, I have to say again, this year, they're experiencing extreme difficulties relative to the supply chain logistics of receiving deliveries on time and receiving what they actually ordered. I mean, it's a daily juggling act going on today in food service. We post menus on a monthly basis, but I mean, the whole public has to be aware that we strive to meet those menus. But these days, because of the shipment delays and the timing delays, sometimes we have to put substitutions there. So even, you know, the meals that we're saying we're going to serve may not be correct. And this has been going on for a number of weeks, and it just is starting to get worse and worse, you know, which is, we did send a communication out to the public today, telling them about, you know, these logistics, and it's happening across the whole country. And, you know, that's not an easy environment to work in, and I just have to, my hat's off to the food service people. They're just doing an incredible job, and Ken Smith is doing an incredible job. We were unfortunate, we lost our assistant manager early on. She left us September 17th, so we're trying to hire that position. And, you know, she's, they're running on all cylinders. You know, they have 10 cylinders, fortunately. I mean, because that's what's keeping the business going right now.
Yeah, that's a really good point, John. Okay, I don't see any other hands. Are we ready to, we have a motion, a second. Are we ready to vote? Okay, Michelle?
Hi.
Jen?
Hi.
Ness?
Hi.
Carlos?
Hi.
Tim?
Hi.
Liza?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. So the memorandum of agreement is approved, and thank you for your time, Joe. Okay, next, we are moving back to item six, unfinished business. I'm sorry, we forgot communications. Does anyone, Gary, do you have any communications? No. Does anyone on the School Committee have any communications? Okay, so we'll move on to 6.1, which is to discuss School Committee, subcommittee functions and goals, and to act as appropriate. So we discussed this before. We have kind of an outline of what each subcommittee is responsible for, to do the work of the full committee. And so we have two new subcommittees this year with wellness and with curriculum, and then we also combined finance with capital and facilities. So those committees, everyone took a look at what their committee roles, how they saw that, as well as reviewing some of the older standing committees, special education policy and salary negotiations, just to see if any of the definitions needed to be tweaked. So I was thinking we could just go through in alphabetical order and talk about the functions and the goals of each committee. And thank you all for meeting over the past couple of weeks to get this done. And then, once we do that, we can move on to the next item, which is to look at the superintendent and full school committee goals, because we figured they'll tie together. So I will do, I'm going to share screen for, so if we pull up the curriculum. Subcommittee. See, here we go. So this is what we came up with. We, our committee was, I was joined by Ness and Tim, and then Dr. Labila joined us too, and we kind of talked through how we saw this committee working. And we also really talked about how we wanted to make sure that, you know, that while the School Committee is responsible for overseeing the district curriculum, we're not the professional educators, and we want to make sure that we delineate that. And we, you know, we can use our role as budget and policymakers for the districts to, you know, to push things forward, but we're not the ones approving, like textbooks, individual textbooks and the detailed curriculum. So what came up for function was, as the governing body of the Hingham Public Schools, the School Committee is responsible for overseeing the district curriculum. However, Massachusetts law is clear that the role of the committee is to act through the use of budget and policy, and that most curriculum decisions are mainly guided by district educational professionals. The curriculum subcommittee was formed to assist the full school committee with this work, and well, one, consider and discuss curriculum-related issues, and to make specific curriculum policy and budget recommendations to the full school committee. Two, hear department program reviews and to report to the full committee. Three, hear secondary program of studies review and the elementary curriculum summaries and to report back to the full committee. Four, review and advocate for proposed new additions to the curriculum. And five, review reports of the curriculum related to complaints and to report back to the full committee. Does anyone have any questions or comments about any of that? And if you could just use the raise hand function, because I can't see anyone, if you do. Okay, I'm not seeing any. So the goals we came up with, and I'm sorry, there's a typo in this one. Over the 2021 to 2022 school year, the curriculum subcommittee will, one, continue to define and refine the role of the curriculum subcommittee, and just full stop there. Since this is brand new, we figured it's going to be, you know, we'll be working on this over the next several years. So two is to develop a multi-year, goal-oriented curriculum review model. This is related to the department reviews. We talked about talking about standardizing them and coming up with a good model for reporting back to the committee. So we'd work with Dr. Labila on that, so that it could be, so the expectations were clear for each department. And then three was to begin to identify new goal focuses to align the curriculum subcommittee goals with the district's strategic plan. That's something that would probably wait until later in the year, once the strategic plan is developed. So does anyone have any questions or comments on that one? Okay, I'm not seeing any. So we will move on to the next one, which is Finance and the Capital and Facility Subcommittee. Ness, do you want to take us through those, and I will pull up?
So do you think I should read all of the functions, go through all of the existing ones, the new ones, or should I just highlight the new ones, you think?
Why don't you just highlight the new ones, unless there's something you need to, we want to emphasize?
So we have, as you know, the Finance and Capital and Facilities subcommittees got combined into one subcommittee this year. So I basically took the two different functions of those groups and put them there. I did add a couple more, and I should back up. I am joined by Carlos De Silva and Jen Benham on this subcommittee, and our administrative person, contact is John Barris, who is the Director of Business and Support Services. So we met, and we thought about, it's highlighted here, you'll see under the operating budget, he said, review potential turnbacks nearing the end of the fiscal year and discuss the ability to fulfill. to fulfill other departmental needs with funds. So this came up actually during a curriculum conversation that there are times and we might want to get new textbooks. And we were waiting for the following year, but if we have a significant amount of turnbacks, we might be up. May it might be able to work with Jamie LaBella on figuring out how to fulfill that in the current year. So we get a process in place for that. And then, if you scroll down to the capital and facilities. So capital and facilities, what we generally do is we meet with the capital overlay town committee every year in the January, December, January timeframe. The idea is to go through your capital plan. And we should be going through facilities and what those needs are. But we end up do we end up coming up with a five year plan on the our minor projects and not major projects. So we thought with the master plan process going on for the school committee right now, we thought we would add additional ones here. So one would be to ensure an updated master plan is in place. The last time we got this done was, I think, in two thousand and five. So we're in the process of doing that now. And then the second one would be to work with the school department administrators to annually review the master plan and update the rolling schedule of school department renovations and new construction needs. We would then review with the school committee in the August, September timeframe and take required action. So the idea behind this one is anything that is major in our facilities. So if PRS needs a roof, we we would talk about that. That would be on our rolling schedule that comes out of the master plan process. We talk about that annually, update. And if there is a project that isn't necessarily ready, we could then go to that rolling schedule and and start working on the next project. So we thought that that was important to put in there as far as functions go. And then our goals, a little bit more lengthy than Carrie's, so bear with me. Our first goal would be to work with the school committee and administration to form a school master plan review committee. Possible members for the review committee may include school committee representation, school building committee representation, a select board appointee, a capital outlay committee representative, community representative appointed by the school committee, and school department staff resources. The review committee should convene to review the facilities space and master plan study being performed right now by Habib and his associates and present a report to the school committee, including recommended next steps. So the reason we highlighted this one is this was done back when the last master plan process took place. And it was just to get eyes on the report and just make it basically poke holes in the master plan to make sure that Habib and associates are thinking through all of the all of the needs that we have. Our second goal would be to work with the mass. The finance committee would work with the school master plan review committee and Habib and associates to come up with a rolling schedule of school department renovations and new construction needs. For example, we talked about the Health and Wellness Center at the Hingham High School and additional space in Town Hall for the school department. Those were a couple that we brought up, but we know that there are many other projects. The rolling schedule will a round timeline of when major projects should take place. We would review the rolling school committee and take required action. Our next goal would be to revisit student fee and charges workshop with the administration and the school committee and evaluate the necessity of changes to the fee structure. So if you remember, we had a workshop that we did in, I believe, December of twenty nineteen. So we would plan to update that and take action if deemed necessary. And our last one would be to discuss and make recommendations to the school committee regarding moving technology funding out of capital in account for through our operating budget. This is another one that comes up from time time to time. As you know, the technology is used by the the students and staff. So it's more appropriately appropriately booked in the operating, but it shows up in capital every year. We haven't moved that, then there would be a lot of explaining to do as far as why the budget is going up even more than what we generally get. But the town is going through their sustainability project right now. And we thought that we end up moving towards an override or other other type funding situation. This might be the time to make that movement. So we thought we'd start discussing that with the school committee. And that was all that we had. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
That's that's a lot of work. Thank you. That's good. Does anyone have any comments or questions? I just had one. So when you refer to the master plan review committee, would you consider making it the school facilities master plan review committee? Just I worry about it getting confused with the strategic plan.
Right. Okay. We'll do.
That's all right. Okay. All right. Well, thank you, Ness and the finance committee for that. Next, I think we have policy. Jen, do you want to?
Mind pulling up Carrie?
Yeah, sorry, I'm just finding.
Oh, sorry. There you go.
It's up on the top there.
Thank you. Yep. Yes. So we met. The policies of committee, we met on last Wednesday, which is myself, Carrie Nei and Liza O'Reilly. And these are our five goals that we came up. The first would be to create a system for reviewing policies to ensure that all the school claim policies are periodically reviewed. As you all recall, we the last year's policy subcommittee redid the the policy manual. So we want just to put a system in place to make sure that everything is looked at and reviewed with a formal schedule. And then the second was to incorporate gender inclusivity into all school committee policies. And that is in in line with the new town bylaws that was passed. This passed the bulk to go through the policies and establish that everything is in alignment with that. And then the third would be to work in concert with the superintendent and the Hingham Police Department in updating the understanding between the Hingham Public Schools and the Hingham Police Department. And fourth would be to review each school handbook, building schools to ensure that they're consistent with the new committee policy manual that was that was finalized last year. And then lastly would be to develop a proposed draft of the following policies outlined below to be considered by the full committee, which would be a therapy dog policy. And I apologize, that should say therapy animal policy and then graduation ceremony ceremony policy. Questions?
I don't see any. Thank you, Jen. If there are hands up, Michelle, could you just let me know? I can't really see from with the screen sharing on. Okay, if that's if that one's good, thank you very much. Next is salary negotiations. So Liza, do you want to take that one? And I'll pull that up too.
Okay, so our functions are the same from the year before, just like policy was. So we continue to participate in collective bargaining, recommend contract changes and work with the superintendent and Director of Business Support Services. We should actually now that I'm reading this, we should probably add the Director of Human Resources to this update that to that list. And work with legal counsel to develop plans to respond to grievances or legal actions and keep this school committee informed of any personnel issues. For our goals, I apologize, we didn't formally have a subcommittee meeting about this. We've been meeting about so many other things that it just kind of slipped my mind. And but these are things that we had discussed in various at various different points of public meetings. So one is to this, we had agreed that the salary negotiation subcommittee would take the lead on the superintendent search process and particularly including the screening of candidates up until that point, when the candidates become public. Second, conducting collective bargaining negotiations for any COVID related working conditions, which we're in the process of doing. And then the third thing, which we had alluded to earlier in the discussion of the food service workers contract, is to work with the Personnel Board to review collective bargaining agreements to support the efforts of the town's sustainable budget task force as we look to the future growth of budgets for the whole town. So those are the three pretty big goals. So I think that was enough after last year negotiating all the contracts.
Yeah, this is supposed to be a quiet year, right? Well, thank you very much, Liza. Does anyone have any questions, comments on this one? Okay, not seeing any. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to special education. Michelle, if you want to take that, I will pull that one up.
Thank you. That's me. So the special education subcommittee is made up of myself, Jen Benham and Tim Miller Dempsey. We work very collaboratively with Dr. Venice, the Department of Student Services, the director of that department. So the committee role slash function is to support the work of the Department of Student Services and the Director of Student Services and to share timely updates with the school committee on issues relating to special education to promote student achievement. For our goals this year, we had a lot of conversation at our meeting. In attendance at the meeting were Dr. Venice, as well as the couple of members of the CPAC board who helped us put these goals together. And one of the top goals that we had to come up with after speaking with Dr. Venice, who mentioned how very challenging this year is. I'm sure this is a surprise to no one, right? But, you know, we all sort of, to quote Dr. Venice, we had all sort of walked into this year back in well, before we walked into this year in the late spring, early summer, we were hopeful that this was going to be a normal school year and, you know, maybe kids would have to wear masks. And while things are much more normal than usual, you know, there are a lot of challenges still in in the district with students. So and with the staff as well. So one of our main goals, number one goal is to support the Director of Student Services in maintaining the health and well being of special education staff members to ensure that our students have access to the highest quality services and to reduce the impact that staff burnout can have on student achievement. We thought that was an important goal because, you know, happy and healthy teachers make for happy and healthy students. Goal number two is to receive regular reports on programming, scheduling, transportation, budget, COVID recovery efforts and any other challenges or issues that may require support from the school committee. And sorry, to hear those, sorry, that's not worded well, to hear those reports from the Director of Student Services. And then we would report back to the school committee if there are things that the committee can do to support those initiatives. Number goal number three is we will work with Dr. Venice in previewing the annual budget for special education, including her staffing recommendations. And number four, we will support the Director of Student Services restructuring of the Student Services Department this year as that department is expanding some of its responsibilities this year to include all student services, including homeless students, students in foster care, English language learners. We're able to, the department is able to do that, take on those responsibilities this year because we did add to special education directors. So Dr. Venice's office will now be taking on additional responsibilities and will need to structure that department accordingly.
That's great. Does anyone have any questions or comments on this one? I just had one comment is we're going through the curriculum subcommittee because again, it's brand new and we hadn't had one before. And I looked around at what other districts that have curriculum subcommittees, how they structure that. And they, a lot of them, most of them include a special education in with the curriculum subcommittee. So it's not it's an isolated subcommittee. It's it's, you know, not segregated really. And so the curriculum would oversee special education and ELL, homeless, like all the student services as well. So I don't know if we probably don't want to do that right now. And that's something I think we'd want to make sure we worked with CPAC on to make sure that that it's covered, but it might be something to move towards rather than having two separate committees. Because it's a it's a continuum, right? Like special education doesn't exist in a back that a vacuum. So it just might be something to look at going forward.
Absolutely. Go ahead. No, absolutely. I agree, Carrie. So yeah, that is definitely something that the special ed subcommittee can work on. You know, in consultation with CPAC, to your point, it's not that we're not wanting to focus on special education, but it the focus should be in a more holistic way. And that can be that can be overseen by some of the other subcommittees, particularly curriculum. So I think that's a a great idea.
Great. Well, these look great for this year. Thank you very much. So the last one we have is wellness. Pull that one up. Liza, you could.
Okay. Okay, so this is a new subcommittee and I'm fortunate to chair and Michelle and Ness Corente are also on the subcommittee with me. And this subcommittee was identified first because of our policy revisions that we made. And we recognized that policy ADF is a school district wellness program. And by that policy and by state law, we're responsible for having a wellness committee. And we haven't really been doing that. And so we wanted to make sure that that wellness committee gets established. And that's a committee that covers our nurses, our food service program, school administrators, there's members of the public that will be invited to join that as well and community members. And it's it's to have a macro view of all of the nutrition, health, athletics, everything that we're doing in the the district. So this subcommittee will work with our Director of Student Services, who's person we've identified to lead up that wellness program and to get that established. So it can meet, you know, once or twice this year. So that's the first focus. Then also to monitor our equity program initiatives that have begun. And then, as was alluded to, also because of the town's gender neutral bylaw, to make sure that the school department is complying with that. And it's also part of equity. And then to work with our counseling and student services department to monitor our social emotional programs and student social emotional health. The district has been doing a lot of work and the tiered system of support for social emotional programs. And, you know, as Michelle alluded to with special ed, our students, and we've heard too from the high school, you know, we our students are impacted by the return from the pandemic, especially their social emotional health. And so our committee is committed to making sure that the school committee is aware of what the needs of our students are. And then also to work with the athletic director in support of the self-study that he had done. And also as part of equity and law of complying with Title Nine regulations and ensuring that we have an equitable experience for all of our sports. And then to perform other tasks as directed by the school committee. So we really looked at the whole student and their social emotional health and the equity of everything that we're doing. So for our goals, one, as I had mentioned, is to establish the district wellness committee and then evaluate any recommendations received from that committee. To then two, to discuss and make recommendations to the full school committee regarding gender neutral terms in keeping with the town bylaw. And two, that just came to the top of our mind is a new mascot for Hingham High School. The harbor man is not quite so gender neutral. And then other terminology and just one that was obvious to us was the use of the term freshman to another term such as first year or other. And we did feel that this would be a good task for all the school councils to address as well. Um, so we're going to share that with them. And we also felt that the mascot, that's going to be a, a big community wide effort. And it would be something, um, that'd be appropriate to take on after the super, the new superintendent is, um, identified. Just so we don't have two major community efforts going at the same time. And also students would be involved with that. Um, then to, three would be to identify social emotional status of our students across the district. Um, we, we felt it would be important to meet with the counselor, counseling director and student services director to get an update of, of where we are. We've heard that there's a lot of needs, but for the subcommittee to work with them and then to provide communications to the full school committee and especially come budget time of what the needs are in the district. And then four, to work with the athletic director to help with fulfilling the next steps of the department self-study that was presented to us. And then to review and analyze the athletic department budget and the programming and any Title IX regulations to ensure equity across the program. Um, and then to address those findings and recommendations, um, including any, you know, male, female balance, but also team to team, making sure that, you know, every team feels that there, it's equitable across, um, the program. Um, and then five, to evaluate the structure of our current athletic, artistic and extracurricular booster groups and research options for equity and full support of our sports and extra, extracurricular activities. But making sure that it's equitable for what gets, um, what gets supported as well. Um, want to, and that is part of booster groups are part of Title IX regulations. But we've also had discussions with our, our school committee and, you know, what are fees that the drama parent supporters pay versus Hingham Music Parents Association versus the sports boosters. Um, and we also felt that if we can do some analysis of that, that will also help with the effort of that finance subcommittee and talking about fees too. So we're all kind of doing a lot of work that will support one another in accomplishing what we need to get done.
That's great. Yeah, there are, there's a lot of overlap between all of the subcommittees. Which is good. Does anyone have any questions for, comments for Liza? Um, I, I just, I just have one because, you know, I'm chairing the other brand new subcommittee this year and that I, I mentioned that we put up front that, you know, the school committee is coming at this from a budget and policy lens. And I think it's going to be important for the wellness committee to, I don't know if you want to put something in there saying that. Um, because there are certain things in here like, um, identify the social emotional status of students. It's not so much the school committee will be doing that, it would be the department, but then you want to support them, right? I think that's how it went. But I think this is great. This is a lot of things that needed to happen for a long time. So.
Yeah, I guess I, I, what we meant by identify was just receive a report from the staff so that we can be kept up to speed and then be able to evaluate the recommendations. So I'll change that wording.
Okay, great. Thank you.
That was the intent. Yeah, it wasn't, we, we just want to know so we can help. This is basically our goal.
Exactly. Yeah, that's what I, that's how I read it too. Okay, any other? Oh, I see. I'm going to come out of shared screen here and then I see a hand up. Um, and I'll recognize Holly Pilot. If you could unmute yourselves and just give, state your name and address for the record.
Yep. Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Yep. Holly Pilot, uh, 123 Weir Street. Just Liza, on it, how would you identify the social and emotional status of the students? Would it be like a survey or the teacher's just going to report it?
Um, our next steps were to, um, have one of our subcommittee members meet with the Director of Counseling and the Director of Student Services and for them to, to be, be able to provide us with some overview and some more specifics about what situations they're finding. Um, you know, more general information. Um, because we can't, you know, more report on the tiered system of supports. You know, we're not going to get into individual cases. But, um, you know, we're hearing that, that, you know, it's a tough adjustment and we want to be able to know more of what's going on.
And if I can just jump in, Holly, uh, the part of the multi-tiered support systems, they already have screening, uh, surveys in, um, that I believe, uh, Dr. LeBilloy is going to report on next month. Is I have that right?
So we do screen, uh, as with the SRSS, that's the elementary, and then the secondary uses the SDQ. Uh, from those screenings, a cup, uh, coupled with parent referral is how they make their grouping for intervention. Um, I am reporting on the initial screenings in the academic realm, but I had not, um, if the committee would like, uh, an, uh, sort of a sense of where the, we are with the social emotional, I could present that. But I had been planning to do the academic screening to, to go back to the data that we presented, um, mid-year last year as part of the budget work.
That was my fault. That was, I misspoke, Jamie. Sorry.
Okay, thank you. Hey, I'm not seeing any other hands, so I'm, I'll take a motion to, um, accept the function and goals of the subcommittees as presented with the proposed minor edits.
I'll make a motion to accept the proposed, um, functions and goals of the school committee with edits as proposed.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go roll call. Michelle?
Hi.
Jen?
Hi.
Ness?
Hi.
Carlos?
Hi.
Uh, Tim?
Hi.
Liza?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. So those are accepted and we'd like to just get them on the website, um, later. Um, if you had any minor edits to those that we discussed, if you could just make them and send, send them to me, I'll put them together and send them to Sherry. Um, six point two is to discuss the 2021, 2022 superintendent and school committee goals and act as appropriate. Um, so let's talk about the superintendent goals first and then we can get into the school committee ones. Um, Gary, you, you had updated us all that when we did our, uh, Saturday morning workshop. But do you want to just give a kind of a high level, um, presentations for people who may not have been there? You're muted, isn't it?
Yeah, sorry. My, my mouse, uh, is not working very well. Couldn't click the button. So anyway, let me give you an update on, uh, the goals for the superintendent for, uh, the remainder of the year. Uh, the first goal, um, is the strategic plan and, and get that process underway and actually get to the point where we have a document that will guide the district for the next three years, three to five, depending on what the district decides. But I think we've discussed, uh, a three-year may be the best, uh, plan. But right now it's, that's one of the major goals that, um, we have moving forward. I have moving forward is, is really try to get that uh, process underway and actually get it to a point where we have a, a framework and a, a plan of, that's published by, uh, June. Uh, the second goal is the budget. Now, we have a number of challenges that we have to work through this year with the budget. We have, uh, a, uh, the funding of, of Foster Elementary School. We have, uh, the increase to the budget, uh, to, you know, some of the staff that was added last year. And based on how the budget is built and how it's funded, uh, depending on how the town decides to fund the budget, uh, there may be a, a possible, um, override, operational override that may be on the table. And that's something that we have to work through in the months to come on how we manage that. So that's a big, um, a big move for us in the district and something that we are working on. And, and, um, I think the months from, uh, November, December, January are going to be very crucial as we go through the budget process. Uh, the next, uh, goal is the appointment and transition of a new superintendent. Uh, the goal for the school committee is try to get a, a superintendent appointed by the new year. Uh, so I'm going to work on a transition, uh, with the new superintendent, hopefully begin, um, you know, working with the appointed, uh, individual to get them acclimated and meet people. And actually, I, I would like to see if it's possible for the appointed, uh, person to, um, you know, take part when they can on the strategic plan, kind of listen to what's happening. Uh, so they can get a good feel of the stakeholders, their position, look at the data that we collect so that they have a good idea of, uh, the kind of work that, um, went into building the strategic plan and also the outcome of the strategic plan. So I think that's a, um, a goal of, of, of mine, but I think the, the school committee, uh, wants nothing more than to support the new superintendent so that they can succeed in Hingham. The next goal is the Foster School Project. I think that has been on the radar for quite some time for, uh, the stakeholders here in, in Hingham. Uh, we have a very aggressive timeline. We also have a, uh, town meeting vote that will actually, um, you know, uh, pass a, a bond to pay for the building. Keep in mind that that's a partial payment for the building because the Massachusetts School Building Assistance Program will partner with us to actually pay, um, a portion of that building. So that's something that we have working on. Uh, John Ferris has been extremely involved with that. We have, uh, Dr. Le, Dr. LeBilloy and also Jen Arnold, uh, over at Foster are working behind the scenes to create an educational plan that will be embedded into the design and, and features of that school. Uh, also there have been a number of people that have been involved with, um, the visioning sessions to actually help inform the design of that, of that building. So that's something that we're looking forward to. But again, it takes a great deal of effort from a number of people to actually accomplish that goal. And the last goal is communication enhancement. Uh, one of the things that I had shared early on with the school committee is the need for, uh, communication to be ramped up um, in the years to come. And we're going to really implement this year. But I think it's something, uh, that we would like to do is create a model of communication, communication plan that we follow through with and that there's a level of expectation on what comes out of the school district that's at a high level. And, uh, we're looking forward to that. We're excited about that. We think it's necessary. And I think the school committee has welcomed that. Um, and again, um, Carrie, I think my goals were centered around the conversations that we've had from the, the first conversations that we've, we had, uh, and actually until the day that I actually put these together. Um, I think they encompass some of the strategic pieces that the school committee and the stakeholders have identified as need. And we're going to move forward with that. So that's, that's how I came up with these and that's what I presented probably, uh, uh, almost two weeks ago, uh, to the school committee.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments or? Okay, um, I'll take a motion to approve the interim superintendent goals as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the superintendent's goals as presented.
One second.
Thank you. Uh, all in favor? Michelle?
Hi.
Jen?
Hi.
Ness?
Hi.
Carlos? No, I think you jumped off for a minute. Um, Tim?
Hi.
Liza?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. So, um, could you just, Ness, could you just note that Carlos didn't vote on that one? Um, next, uh, so then we also have, oh, somebody has a hand up. It's like.
Yeah. That's me.
Okay.
So I just, I forgot to mention, and I implied it, but I didn't say it explicitly. I just want everyone to know that although these are my goals, it, it takes a lot of people to actually accomplish them. So I just want to highlight that my staff i- is busy behind the scenes making these things, you know, come to fruition. So i- it's, it's really a collective effort to actually make these things work. So I just want to highlight them. I didn't do that, do, do that in my presentation. Um, I didn't articulate that clearly, but I just want you to know that it's, it's a, it's a cumulative effort.
Definitely. Thank you. So now with that being said, we wanted to talk about the school committee goals. Um, I put together a draft that, um, just to start working from, um, no pride of authorship here. Um, we can change whatever, but it's going to be easier to do that than to, um, try to come up with them from scratch. And this, Sherry put it in here as a Google Doc, so you can jump in and make edits. Would somebody like to do that? To just kind of type as we go if there are any.
I'm always terrible about being able to get into these like shared documents, but I see Liza's already in there. She wants to.
Yeah, I can, I'll, I'll do it as, oops. Oh, I'll do it as suggesting so that we can track it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks, Liza. That's great.
Okay, so there are, I think, five goals on here. Um, and Liza, thank you for drafting the equity goal.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we'll start with the superintendent goal. Um, so this reads, "Over the 2021, 2022 school year, the Hingham School Committee will seek, recruit and hire a student-focused superintendent to lead Hingham Public Schools, who will make, um, this person, well, edit that, will make student-focused, data-driven decisions to support and meet the differentiated educational needs of all students and will build and foster a climate of mutual trust and respect with all stakeholders." And then to meet this goal, the school committee will. Um, and this, uh, that, the language in the last sentence came from the draft of the ideal superintendent candidate profile. And those seem to be the big, the most important things to people, um, so far. That it's student-focused, that it's data-driven, and then the climate of mutual trust and respect, especially after last year. Um, and then the, um, this is the school committee, well, these are kind of the benchmarks. Follow the agreed-upon search process to ensure the superintendent candidate is hired by the end of the school year, ideally before January 15th, 2022. Um, and we'll meet the benchmarks outlined on the NESDEC timeline. We'll engage the community in the process and we'll do that by providing a forum to gain community input into the ideal superintendent profile, which we did earlier tonight. Um, provide a community survey to seek community input on the ideal superintendent profile. Uh, we'll form a screening committee representing all relevant Hingham Public Schools stakeholders. We'll conduct community listening sessions to seek public input on the candidates once the final, finalists are announced and provide clear and consistent communication with the community about each stage of the superintendent search process and about opportunities to provide input and get involved. Um, also said we would set the next superintendent up for success, which successfully negotiating a contract with the selected superintendent candidate, uh, supporting collaboration between the interim superintendent and his successor. Does anyone want to make any edits to any of that or add things, take things out? And Michelle, I think you can keep an eye on, on hands for me because I can't see them.
Yep. I will. No hands raised?
Okay. Then we can move on to the budget goal, which is over the 2021. Oh, sorry, Rebecca Silva. Raise her hand. So. Oh, no. Did she not?
She did. I see.
Okay.
There we go.
I see again. There we go.
Can you, can you hear me?
We can. Hi.
Now we can.
Okay, sorry. I'm like, yeah, anyway. Um, I just wanted to s- a comment. It's not really a question, but the, um, the line about make sure that all stakeholders are represented on the search committee. Um, I, I think that's a, very admirable and, and, but also lofty and just wondering how, how we're, how you're going to make sure that, that that's actually attainable and, and, and happens. If you can just speak to that or.
So, uh, Liza had alluded to this earlier, um, to, today. We have, so we were, we're working with NESDEC, um, to, which is the, our search firm, um, to help with this. And they have a suggested list to make sure we cover all of the people that, um, that we need to, um, to do it. So we're following their guidance with that. And then we're also asking, you know, the, the different groups to select their own people. So like the HEA will pick the teacher rep, the PTOs will pick the parent rep. So that they're, they're choo- they're choosing. PTOs will pick the parent rep, so that they're they're choo- they're choosing their representation. It's not the school committee doing it. Does that make sense?
Oh, it does.
Oh, so I actually, Rebecca, I hear what you're saying. Maybe the word we want to use is um, well, it does say of like a, it does say form a screening committee representing all relevant, so I'm just thinking, that's what we want to say, like, that it's a all the stakeholders will be represented, not individually. I think that, I think that's more Rebecca was saying, like, how are you possibly trying to get every person, right? But I think we're saying we will have, it'll be like a representative democracy, right? Like, people will be chosen to represent the views of, you know, CPAC and the arts and athletics. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. I'm, one of the things that had come up at a, at a meeting I was at earlier was, you know, is there going to be a special ed representative? And that, and I had had, my thought was that could be through a teacher or a parent or somehow, but just to make sure that that is that that does happen, because you could easily also kind of miss that if you got a general ed teacher and a non-special, a parent that wasn't, you know, had any background with special ed, just as an example.
Yep. That's exactly what we're thinking, Rebecca. Um, you'll get, there are people that will kind of cover a lot of different groups.
Okay. Okay. Uh, well, that, well, that, is it NESDEC? Would that be posted as part of the process?
It would, would be posted.
The, the, the list of all of the um s- s- stakeholders that you're trying to make sure you're representing, you said it, you were gonna, you're basing it on um recommendations from NESDEC?
Yep, and yes, it will. And what we did last time, and we'll probably do again this time, is have bios for all of the um people on the screening committee.
Okay.
Uh, you can see what their backgrounds are and what their a- areas of expertise are.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Thanks, Rebecca. Okay, so um, okay, thank you for making those edits, Liza. Okay, so are we okay with this one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, next is the budget goal, which is, "Over the twenty twenty-one- twenty twenty-two school year, the school committee is committed to collaborating with the superintendent, and should say interim superintendent, to develop a sustainable budget and plan for future budgets that meet, meet the needs, sorry, of all students, and meet community expectations. Uh, to accomplish this goal, the school committee will collaborate with Hingham Town officials to develop a sustainable budget plan, and we'll do that by participating in the town-wide Sustainable Budget Task Force through a school committee representative, communicate regularly with the Select Board Representatives and the Education Subcommittee of the Advisory Committee regarding the school department budgetary needs. Um, additionally, for the school, we will collaborate with the interim superintendent and Director of Business and Support Services through the budget process to develop a fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty, twenty-three budget that meets the needs of all Hingham students in a fiscally responsible way." And then finally, we will involve the community in the HPS budget process, and we'll do that by providing clear and consistent communication with the community about the budget process and about opportunities to provide input. Does anyone have any thoughts or edits on this one?
Good.
Okay. Um, who is strategic plan goal? And this was, "Over the twenty twenty-one- twenty twenty-two school year, the Hingham School Committee will collaborate with school administration and all stakeholders, including Hingham Public Schools staff, parents, and the community to develop a three-to-five-year, student-focused strategic plan for the district. And to accomplish this goal, we will collaborate with the interim superintendent to hire a vendor to develop the plan by it's input on the date. It sounds like it's coming up, though. Um, so seek involvement and input into the development of the plan from all stakeholders, and we'll do that by providing clear and consistent communication with the community about each stage of the planning process and about opportunities to provide input and get involved. And we will host a sur- a survey in multiple focus groups in collaboration with the vendor and school administration. And then finally, we'll collaborate with the vendor administration to ensure the three-to-five-year strategic plan that prioritizes the educational needs of all students is developed, along with a pr- a plan for implementation. And then we'll document the plan on the website. Does anyone have any thoughts on this one?
Um, can can we add um? I, I'm thinking of that we communicated out to the entire community, not just um not just school parents, but because the strategic plan is actually referenced in the town master plan.
Mm-hmm.
So um that's what.
That's a great idea.
Yep.
Michelle?
Sorry, I just have a question. Um, on the first bullet point too, with collaborate with the interim superintendent to hire a vendor, are we in, it, are we involved with that process, or is that more of, so it sounds like the RFP went out already, and so is that something that, Gary, will you and your central office team be selecting them, or is the su- or is the school committee involved in that process of?
Yeah, I think it depends on how many applications we get. Um, but I think we could, my office can actually manage that and just make it a little bit more streamlined, if that's the desire of the committee.
Okay, we, dude, what do you, what do you think about that?
What I can do is let the committee know what we have for applications for vendors.
Okay. Do you want to take that one out, then, Michelle, is that?
Yeah, I was thinking, or just word it slightly differently, like um
support.
Support, I know, is that right? Just like, I feel like we're doing a lot of supporting this year. But support the interim superintendent in hiring a vendor to develop the plan.
Okay.
Yeah, we could. I, I actually like collaborate, because if it, if it comes down to, you know, you have two or three finalists, and then we're looking at, you know, if there's an evaluation. I, I.
Agree, but I, that's what I, that's why I was asking the question. Are we going to be doing that, or is is Gary and the team just going to select?
I mean, it could, if it does come down to one is like superior to all of them, and it's an easy collaboration, then you just do it. But this kind of leaves it open to we have the opportunity to have a say.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. Um, is there a target date, Gary, for when we hire the vendor?
I would like to hire them by the beginning of next week.
Okay.
I think timing is, I mean, it'd be nice to get some of this stuff underway by the holidays. I mean, it, our calendars, as you can imagine, are gonna get packed.
Yep, they already are. So.
Right.
Does that work, Michelle?
Sorry, I don't want to be that person. I don't love it, because I, because I'm just trying to say that, like, and and with no judgment at all, and I have full faith in Gary selecting a firm to do it. So I just don't want this to be that we collaborated with Gary to hire a vendor if we didn't, if Gary just made a recommendation to us. So, but I, but so it, it just sounds like we won't really have time. If he wants to get somebody, if Gary wants to get somebody in place by next week, we may not have time to meet and talk about, like, when would we have time to meet again, to talk about who the companies are?
Yeah, that makes sense. John?
Uh, yeah, just when, when we put the um PRP out for the vendor, I mean, we put, we put a selection criteria in there, you know, looking for education, looking for experience, doing that. So I, I think the thought was, um, you know, from the administration standpoint, that when these bids came in or when these, and they're really not even bids, they're more qualifications. Um, you know, we're looking for qualifications. When they came in, that we would have like a, you know, a small screening committee comprised of central office people that would actually review the um vendors along with the um criteria that we set up and and, you know, the, for the evaluation of what we were looking for. And then we would like, you know, shortlist them, and then perhaps we'd call one in to talk to them, and um, you know, and and then negotiate from there, you know, whatever the price would be. So we didn't really, you know, um, consider that it was gonna go out to a big wide um uh, you know, the, the, the community, if you would. I think the process itself would involve the community as well as um, administration and people within, but not necessarily much a selection of that vendor.
Yeah. What about the way Liza's edits, Michelle? Is that better?
Yeah, and I like the word support, because I think it's open-ended enough that Gary, if you did come to situation, we were like, oh, I've got these two, what do you, you know, maybe two or three people, you know what I mean, then we could do it, but we're not, we're not saying we are collaborating in the process. Does that make sense?
Yeah. I think it does.
Okay.
All right.
But the plan will be developed by, yes, okay.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, I was like, wait a minute.
Just the firm will be selected. Not easy to add on the spot. Um, are we all good with that one? Okay, and then the finally is the full school committee equity goal. Um, Hingham Public Schools has completed an equity review and continues to implement initiatives to ensure that all students are treated equitably, have opportunities in all programs, and have a strong sense of belonging in the community. The school committee will focus on equity in all aspects of its work, including informing and engaging the school and broader community regarding the mission and vision of the schools' equity to districts' equity, inclusion, and belonging program initiatives. The outcomes of that one would be to ensure equity, inclusion, and belonging knowledge is explored with superintendent candidates. Equity efforts up, uh, updates are provided to the school committee at mid-year and end of the year. Um, next one is evaluating budget requests based on delivering equity and investments in area to ensure meeting um of equity and inclusion goals. And the outcomes of that one are uh equity efforts are incorporated into budget presentations during town meeting budget reviews. Equity efforts are discussed in planning for foster school. Um, and identifying the use of gender-neutral terminology in all district and school committee communications and documentation. And the outcomes are gender-neutral bylaws shared and explained to the leadership team. Policies and handbooks are updated to include general new shirt, gender-neutral language, and students are instructed about general gender-neutral bylaw language. Um, does anyone have any thoughts on this one?
Can you just scroll down, up a little bit, so I can, I just want, the only one little question I had was, in the Hingham Pu- the first sentencing, Hingham Public Schools has completed an equity review, which, which I know a review has been done, but do we want to say kind of continuously reviews equity? So that it doesn't and I don't know if Jamie's still on, if he wants to correct me.
Oh, I'm here. I'm here, Michelle. I, I, I think what I might, what I might suggest in terms of wording is we completed the first year of the equity improvement cycle and sort of leave it there that we've did one year, but we're certainly not done at all. Like, we're not, as you know, from the, the major focus areas, we sort of bit off the first chunk for last year, and we have a, a series of action steps that are rolling up this year to address those. And then this year, we're looking at a whole new cycle, um, or new um, new questions and audit areas within our cycle. So I think um, what we've learned from our training through the Rides Project is that this needs to be an ongoing cycle of improvement, that the concept, as you know, from the committee meeting with Darnisa, and from our keynote to our faculty and the community that saw that, this is an, this is ongoing work that it is really truly never really accomplished, done, right? It's sort of you um, you're done, you go back and reflect on what worked and didn't work, you go back at it again. So I think making reference to the ongoing cycle, I think that's a really great um edit right there, Liza. So that's, I think that captures it well.
And then the only other question or comment I had was um, the budget base, the, the budget requests, and it's mentioned, the budget presentations and equity efforts are discussed in planning for foster school. Is the strategic plan? Should that be referenced anywhere in here?
Oh. Um.
Maybe under the first bullet?
Yeah. Well, it could be.
Here right now.
I mean, it could be its own, like, the same thing repeated for strategic plan. Or it can just be and strategic plan.
Yeah.
Yeah. How about is explored with superintendent candidates comma included or incorporated into the strategic plan? And then and then you could say, and equity efforts will be, equity updates will be provided to the school committee. Does that make sense? Am I right in saying that? My, my English skills are deteriorating it.
Well, it's not, it'll fix when it's done.
Okay, does anyone else have anything?
You know, one, one thing I'm thinking is just on the title, for school, for school committee equity goal. Could do, could we include uh equity and inclusion uh goal, or equity, inclusion? And, I mean, I'm not sure, are we staying away from the word diversity?
Well, we could do belonging too, because that's.
Yeah, equity, inclusion, and belonging.
Yeah, just to call attention to it.
Yeah.
Thank you. That's all.
Okay. So are we ready to vote on these tonight, or do you want to think about it and come back to the next meeting? How do people feel about this?
I vote if the others are ready. I vote to vote.
I vote to vote. Okay, is there, does anyone have an issue with voting? Okay. All right, so I'll take a motion to accept the um, school committee twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two um, goals as proposed.
I will make a motion to accept the proposed school committee goals for the school year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
I'll second.
Oh.
Go to it.
Thank you. Uh, all in favor? Michelle?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Ness?
Aye.
Carlos?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well. So the goals are adopted, and we will get those up on the website, too. Six point three, to hear an update on the superintendent search process. Um, Liza, I think this is you again.
Okay, um. So, and then we just had our tutorial of Google Docs and how wonderful they are for collaboration, but um. So we um, the school committee met uh with NESDEC, our consultant, to go over the um, general process for superintendent search. We have a few members who were here during the two thousand eighteen search, and then we have a few new members um, who were not on the committee at the time, but were active in the search, so it was good to get everyone educated from the consultants. Um, one thing that we did accomplish, um, we met and reviewed the candidate profile for the superintendent and developed a updated draft based on the two thousand eighteen candidate profile. Uh, the candidate profile will be used by the screening committee and the school committee um, as our rubric basically for evaluating candidates. Um, so we wanted to get this done in time for the screening committee. A survey was um, distributed to all Hingham District, Hingham Public School community members, all staff, all parents and guardians, and I do apologize, the survey had required a Google um login. That survey is now fixed, so that anyone with any email address can enter the survey. So uh, communication will go out about that tomorrow, and we will keep the online survey open. We'd like people to review the draft candidate profile and provide us their thoughts. We'd like people to review the draft candidate profile and provide us their thoughts. We've received about thirty online responses so far, um, from staff and, uh, community members. And we've received a few comments tonight on our open forum. And so we will be incorporating all those edits to create a final, uh, candidate profile. We also discussed the screening committee that we will establish. The screening committee will be responsible for evaluating all of the applications that are received. And then selecting a number of candidates, eight, ten, depending on, on how many they feel is appropriate to interview them. The interviews will be done during executive session. It's one of the ten reasons that you can have an executive session under the open meeting law. It protects the identity of the candidates so that if, um, in the event that they're not selected to move on, that that their current position, it's not, you know, their employer doesn't know that they were looking for another job and it protects their identity. So we discussed the makeup of the screening committee. And we decided on an eleven member screening committee. Two school committee members will be myself and Carrie Ne. One central office representative, one principal, one teacher, one director. One public official that we will ask the town administrator to appoint. Two parents that we will ask the PTO presidents to establish a, a process for identifying those two parents. One student as determined by the student advisory committee. And then one at large community member, and we will prepare a application form that can be submitted to the school committee. And the intent of the at large community member, as was referenced earlier in the discussion, is we will look, the school committee will look at what types of expertise or experiences that we need to complement the committee based on the other, um, groups that have appointed people to the committee so that we will ensure that special education is represented appropriately, ages of students are represented appropriately, responsibilities that, you know, will various people can represent various different aspects and be knowledgeable. And we want a variety of people who are knowledgeable about how the school district operates so that when candidates answer questions, we'll know how appropriate the answer to the questions are. So I will be following up with all of these groups and there'll be, um, this week and there'll be, uh, a community announcement about this. We'll get it out this week as well, um, updating this and having the at large application in place. We're hoping for the screening committee to begin work November tenth and through hopefully the end of November, beginning of December. The position has been advertised and is open for applications. That process is ongoing as we speak. And I believe that's everything we had for now on the search.
Thank you, Liza. Anyone have any questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to six point four, which is to hear an update on the Hingham Public Schools vaccination data collection as it pertains to the Desi mask guidance. Gary gave us a kind of an update on that, um, earlier during the superintendent's update, but I think what we're thinking about is, you know, the Desi, um, guidance has a kind of an off ramp when you have eighty percent of a building that's been vaccinated. Um, we, we, from what, uh, Dr. Mason said earlier, we aren't there yet because we have to, we're still working through a lot of logistics as far as collecting the data. But we also have to think about, um, what we want to do about that because our, as it is now, we have a, a mask policy that mandates, um, mask wearing in schools. And so we've, I just wanted to get everyone's thoughts on that, um, about next steps. We're not there yet. It's more to just start thinking about it and start talking about what this means. And, and, uh, Dr. Mason, I don't know if you had anything else to say about that.
Yeah, one of the things that I think is important to, um, identify is that the collection of data is, is very important. We have to validate every indicator that we're collecting. We recently, uh, purchased a piece of software that interfaces with the state database. And, um, if, you know, prior to that, uh, we would have to log in on a student by student basis and actually look up each student and pull that information. So this system that we're, uh, employing will actually allow us to do a cyclical cycling of when students are continually updated on that vaccination list. So that's something that, uh, some school districts in the Commonwealth have had in place. And, uh, Hingham has not, uh, been in that space before. So what we're doing is we're, uh, going to be using a, uh, software interface that will allow us to do this work, which will actually minimize errors and will actually be something that we can, uh, run on a cycle basis. But what happened, you know, the, the data is only as good as the day that we draw it, if we did it manually, because we get students vaccinated. As when they become of age, we have students that haven't been vaccinated yet that may get vaccinated. And we have to keep that running total to see where the numbers are. So, uh, that process is in place. And as I mentioned before, we anticipate in the next week and half to two weeks, we will have information to school committee first. And then once we get that information to school committee, we will share it with the general public, our stakeholders direct.
Great. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions, thought, comments, thoughts about, um, where your heads are about this? This is obviously something we'll be discussing with the HEA as well, um, at least for anything that impacts their working conditions, we'll have to impact bargain that, but does anyone have any? Ness?
Yeah, I guess I'm still of the mind that until the, uh, five to eleven year olds can be vaccinated, I would still want to continue with the mask mandate. Um, as we've seen most of the, uh, COVID outbreaks happening with the younger kids, the elementary school, um, and I'm just concerned that the older kids, if they're masked off, they're going to be bringing things home to their siblings or teachers will be bringing things home to their own kids.
Great. Uh, Tim?
Yeah, I was wondering, I mean, I'm sort of looking at all the moving pieces about deciding when we do want to off ramp the mass. Clearly we would probably start with the high school because they've been vaccinated the longest, but I'm, there are so many moving pieces about the community vaccination rates, including the availability of the vaccine, uh, the rate of infection in the community and sort of the Hingham community and the greater Boston community because, you know, we don't everyone, you know, leaves Boston to go to work or leaves Hingham to go to work, many people. So I'm wondering if the committee that, uh, of do community experts that we had last month to sort of develop the mask policy. I know those were volunteers, but I'm wondering if part of this decision should go to back to that committee about off ramping in the policy that they helped develop just because they do have people who are much more familiar. You know, I think we're all sort of amateur immunologists by now, but there's the difference between being an amateur and a professional seem significant.
Yeah, I would agree with that. Bring in the experts if we can. Um, and we have some very good people in the community. Michelle, did you have something?
Yeah, thanks, Tim, for bringing that up because I was wondering about that as well, if that was an option to sort of reconvene that committee or put, ask, you know, see if they're available, if they're not, um, to add any other medical experts, um, voices on this, because I'm the same. I mean, I, I sort of feel like everyone's way beyond COVID fatigue, right? But I don't want to make a misstep because to Gary's point earlier, right? I mean, we're doing well with cases and you have to think part of that is because of the protocols that we've got in place. And so you don't want to, you don't want to lift those too soon and then find yourself in a position where a bunch of kids are now home quarantined because they weren't wearing masks and now they are close contacts and so.
Yeah. Liza?
Yeah. Um, and speaking to that, you know, every, I would say most students are kind of comfortable now or parent, a lot of families are comfortable with the idea that we have masks on everyone. So I'd also want to look at some of the social emotional feedback from the staff of, you know, what's going on now that our kids are stressed about? And would it stress out too many kids if we started taking masks off? Is that, is that going to add another element? And, and I, I agree with Ness's, you know, it could be soon that younger kids start getting vaccinated. And I also have seen, you know, Hopkinton was one of the first towns that got authorization to meet that milestone of vaccination rate and their school committee decided not to remove the masks yet. So I think we should watch other towns and, and see how they're thinking about it as well. So, uh, you know, I, I'd like some more information and we have some time since we haven't gathered all our data yet.
Michelle?
Sorry, just, um, following up on Liza's point too, um, just so folks are aware that the, um, the school advisory committee to the school committee is, the elections are going to be held on November second. So that's another thing too. Like I think it'd be important to hear some of those voices in this conversation as well. Because I do think, you know, I think Gary and, and Rick Swanson and probably Derek can say that a lot of things that are in, and the elementary school principals as well, that a lot of what's making this year as normal as possible is that we've got the masks on. So I, it would be great, I think, to get the kids' perspective, like how, how does it feel, right? Would, you know, are the masks good because they're allowing you to do the things you normally did, um, you know, or are they, are they? You know, whatever, hear the kids' perspective is the student's perspective, I think is going to be important. And very shortly we will have that group of students.
It'll be good to get those voices in there. Uh, Carlos and then Gary?
Yeah, I think, uh, you know, would be prudent to wait a little longer. Um, the mandate, uh, has been extended until November first at least. With the state putting so much pressure on, on us, state workers, uh, you know, some of my coworkers got, uh, you know, suspended today. Uh, the city of Boston, you know, they implemented suspension. So, you know, down here in the suburbs, at least, you know, there, there is a huge percentage of individuals, staff that have been vaccinated. So hopefully as they, um, review the mandate, uh, on November first or before, that they will take an action at the state level, uh, in that way we can, we could follow suit. So, I would be in favor of, uh, waiting, you know, another few weeks.
Okay, great. Gary, did you?
Yeah, one of the things that, um, I would like to share with the committee is, um, I've had a few phone calls in the last couple of weeks relative to, uh, a different perspective on mask wearing. And I think it's important that we and, and I, I, I really committed to these parents that I would convey this, uh, perspective. You know, we have some students that aren't vaccinated and are not going to be vaccinated. And right now they feel comfortable wearing a mask. And what their, what parents are conveying to me is that, that their, there's, their children have a level of, of, uh, growing anxiety that we're going to have an optional face mask direction, which, which would then in turn highlight their children as unvaccinated because they'll have to wear a mask. Students are feeling that, that pressure, that stress that they don't want to be highlighted in any way or stand out differently, different than anyone else in their class. So I think their perspective is one that I didn't really consider until I had, I had these phone calls. But there are children today in our schools that are feeling a high leveling of anxiety because they know they're unvaccinated. They don't want anyone in their class to know that they're unvaccinated because there's a, a level of pressure on them. And there are a lot of reasons why people don't vaccinate their children or get vaccinated themselves. That's their business. That's what they need to understand. But when you have a situation where you have a child coming into a classroom and they are not able to focus because they feel such an anxiety level because they want to be accepted. And that's a, a clear understanding that I, um, I realize after talking, I've talked to some parents in the last, last couple of weeks.
Yeah, I've heard some of that too. And then about the mask optional, um, idea, the other thing I was wondering about, and I don't know if the administration has some input onto that, but just the enforcement of that, because it's, it's children who are unvaccinated will require to still wear masks. And I just, I worry a little bit about the burden that puts on our teachers, especially at the secondary level. Have you given any thought into how that would be enforced and how that would work?
You know, I, I can contribute to that. I, I think it would be almost unenforceable. I, I think it'd be very, very difficult. You know, you almost have to have a list to walk around with every, every, every day in classrooms to identify who's vaccinated, who isn't, because if, you know, some people still need to wear a mask or there'd be some recommendation on what we would need to do with that. So I, I'll tell you, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, uh, trying to absolve anyone from responsibility. We have great responsibilities in running our schools on a normal basis. Our administrators and teachers in the district have been doing a phenomenal job of managing what we have to put an additional layer on anyone. We're going to be spending all our time in schools monitoring that. And I, I don't, I'm not saying this to, it's this, this, this is just a fact. I'm, I'm not trying to make it sound like we're, um, I'm not making any excuses. Our people will do what we need them to do. But they will be spending their days monitoring who's wearing and who isn't. And they need to be teaching, they need to be administering and I, and I those either, no, I don't, I don't make this, I just do, I work. I, I do what's, what's I'm being told to do and, and what I think is the right thing to do. And I think our teachers, administrators are doing the same thing. But the layers and layers of, um, compliance that we add to the process going forward is making, I, I believe it'll make things much more difficult for administrators to run their buildings and teachers to manage their classrooms.
Yeah. And I just wonder if that, if it's worth it, you know, for what's the benefit? If it's putting that much stress on, it sounds like students and it would on teachers as well. Jen?
Thanks, Gary. Um, I just wanted to really agree to what Michelle had said about getting the kids' perspectives on this and just kind of hearing what they have to say. I was really happy that Gary were able to give us the the numbers and the cases, you know, the cases and to know where we are. And I hope that will continue. I think it's important for all of us to get those, um, biweekly updates on the numbers. I am curious to know the percentage of pool testing and the K three five group, if we could get that, um, maybe the next, the next meeting. And I'm, I'm happy to hear that we are getting the software to, um, to collect that data. I think it's, um, information that's important and, and because I think at some point we're going to be, our cases are, um, continue to go down. Um, and we will be at a point where we will, um, have, be having that conversation of when to remove the masks. I mean, that's whether it's six months, two months, three months, I, I don't know the answer to that, but I think it's good to have, um, a plan in place for those scenarios. And I think it's a great idea to reach out to that. The health group that advised us in August, I think it would be great to, to hear what they have to say. That's it. Thank you.
Agreed. Gary, when, um, once we have the data and, um, would you be able to pull together that group again?
I can, um, I can try to pull the, the group back together and, and I would like to share with them where we are, get their impressions on, on how they see our systems of operation in play. And Jen, as soon as we get the data, I, I believe, uh, you know, it'll be phased based on availability, but I will get that to school committee. When we get it and then I can present it in a forum, uh, through the school committee meeting, our next meeting, but I think it's important to get that. But yeah, I think it's, hey, we're, we're, we're moving forward, you know?
Great. Okay, I see one hand up. Rebecca, if you can unmute yourself and give your name and address. Could you unmute yourself? Could you unmute yourself? Rebecca, you should be able to unmute yourself. All right, I'm going to disable talking for a minute and then and then um, let you do it again. Okay, could you try? Okay, it doesn't seem to be working. Well, why don't we move on then? And if Rebecca's able to unmute herself, we can listen to her comment then. So, so thank you for everyone for that discussion. Obviously, it's ongoing, but it's just good to start thinking about it and talking about it. So the next thing is seven point two, which is to discuss the 2021, 2022 school committee report schedule and act as appropriate. And I want to thank Liza for putting um, this together last year as we were working through this with policy. It's good to have all of this in the right, in the same place. So we can take a look at the schedule. And we, all right, so she had pulled together, these are, most of these reports are things that always go to the school committee. But we kind of divided them up um, using the subcommittees more. Seems like it's a more of a fit, more efficient use of time to have some of these reports go to the subcommittees and then have the subcommittees come back and report at a high level. Um, just would be more efficient, better use of everyone's time. So we can go through here and talk about whether we all think this is appropriate, if we want to make any changes. The first is the annual report warrant message. Um, and that would go to the full school committee um, in January or February. And that'll be the superintendent, school committee chair, but we should be voting on it as a full committee. Um, and just stop me at any point if we, if you have a point uh, to make or a comment or question.
Carrie, can I just add one thing?
Yeah.
There are some uh, reports on here that we've never had on a formal basis, like the attendance report. But so we found these when we were looking at some other s- um, school committees had developed these reports and we discovered them in policy of what we were required to have. And so that's where some of them are coming from too. And why we thought the subcommittees would be good to handle them. So it's it's not too lengthy for school committee meetings.
Yep. And I'll just add, and we talked about this when we were going through the goals and and um, functions of the subcommittees. The subcommittee, the curriculum subcommittee is going to be coming up with a system of reporting for the different departments. So that these reports probably won't happen this year. But we're going to work on getting, you know, expectations and some kind of system in place first, so. Okay, hold on a second. It looks like Rebecca raised her hand again, so I'm going to just backtrack. Oops. Let's see, stop the share. Let's, let's see if no, okay. All right, so back to the reports. Um, okay, so in our uh, report, the athletic department, we have this going to the wellness um, subcommittee annually. If anyone wants to object to that or change it, then just speak up. The attendance report would go to wellness as well. Is that something that you go to wellness or the full committee?
I think we were well, it's, I believe it's tied into our the evaluation of the district from DESI, right? Correct, Jamie?
Is this the overall attendance of uh, students?
Yeah, yep.
That's correct, Liza.
So maybe it goes, is it get incorporated into a bigger report? Like, when does the DESI?
Yeah, would that be one with the MCAS?
Accountability, right?
Yeah.
Accountability is generally delivered end of November.
And is the attendance part of that?
No, the the attendance report um, is usually in the winter when we do the uh, I'm I'm drawing a blank on the exact dates. It's on the superintendent's checklist um, document that we get from the state. I believe it's January or February. Um, it's the school attending children report.
Okay. Sorry. Sorry, go ahead, Ness.
So if there, if there is an issue with a student who isn't attending, who's typically the one following up with that student? Is it a counselor or a social worker or administrator?
It depends on the school, but it would be all of the above. There's um, we have guidelines relative to school attendance. Up until a certain age, students must attend. If needed, they will uh, file uh, court proceedings to ensure the child attends. That's generally handled by the school administrator, but there's outreach and support prior to that from the counseling and support staff in the buildings. But but typical school child attendance is generally um, under the purview of the school principal. The what this, the the full, the district attendance report, it it, I believe is the school attending children report where we account for the attendance of all children in the community and where they go to school. And that's when we hear how many kids are at um, Fair, how many kids are at Notre Dame. That's like the full district attend, that's the the responsibility of the of the school to ensure that all children of school age in the community are attending school. It's not necessarily a report on um, school attendance day to day at, say, salt school or east school.
Would anyone mind if we make that full school committee instead of wellness?
No, I wouldn't mind, but I I would be curious about the attendance in each school too. Because I, and I, I guess because I've heard in the past that we've had some attendance challenges in elementary schools of people pulling their kids out on Fridays for various personal reasons. And so whether that is still happening or if we have a couple of kids that, you know, we have concerns about in gen, you know, as general information.
I understand now better the connection to the account, now that you say that, Liza, I understand more better what you were saying. So in the accountability report, one of the indicators where, I think it was two or three years ago, where we were losing points was on chronic absenteeism, which is defined by absences of more than 10% of the school year, which would be 18 plus days. And so all of the schools at elementary had, were losing points because of quote unquote, chronic absenteeism. So there was a concerted effort among the school principals at the elementary level uh, to remind parents around the importance of attendance. Multi-week vacations outside of the vacations were discouraged and and that really went back to our accountability. But I think the way this is, so now I understand better that connection, so I apologize. So I I I will bring up uh, attendance, but only relative to chronic absenteeism in as it relates to the accountability points and the accountability system.
All right, that's, all right, that sounds good. So we'll make that full school committee. So next is budget presentation to the select board and AdCom. That's the full school committee. Budget season kickoff presentation. That's the superintendent and the finance subcommittee to the school committee. So that, yeah, so that's January, the first week. Budget request from the departments would go to finance. Okay, so those typically go to the superintendent? And then, so the superintendent would bring it to the finance subcommittee? Okay. The public budget hearing, that's the full committee. Bullying discipline prevention presentation, we wellness biannually. That makes sense. Burn down and burn rate finance report, the finance subcommittee. Looking to you, Ness?
Yeah, I'm not sure what that is though. Have to look into that.
Okay. Capital improvement plan would go to finance. Collaborative um, SSCC reports go to the full school committee. Do we want that to go to the full school committee or the special education subcommittee? Anyone have any?
I could go either way with it. To the committee. There's a little part of me that says in an effort to be more inclusive of the reporting that we're doing, it should go to the full school committee, but I'll leave that.
You know, um, Carrie, um, you know, so you have collaborative report, I I almost want to add the CPAC over there as well, slash CPAC. And then go uh, uh, to the SPAD and then to the full school committee.
Well, the only thing with that is, um, you know, right now, it's the superintendent is our, is the school committee's representative, representative for the SSCC board. So it's not really CPACs. Rep, I mean, I I think it's great for CPAC to be up on this, but it tends to be more budgetary reports. I'm just thinking what the reports actually look like.
Well, it's what we already get, those financial reports. So, um, that's actually something we're doing.
Yeah.
And we get them every two months, so.
Yeah, I I kind of want to keep them for the full school committee.
Yeah, fine.
All right. Next, departmental reports, that's curriculum, we'll do that. We'll come up with a schedule. District improvement plan, that'll be the full school committee annually. Early literacy presentation curriculum. So be annual with the full school committee every two years. Um, and for any administrators on the call too, if if this seems like too aggressive, then or or not enough, then just pipe up. High need students with disabilities, low income, English learners, presentation, curriculum. This is where it'd be nice to have both subcommittees, um, you know, combined.
Yeah.
But in reference, Carrie, to the accountability of the performance of the subgroup?
Yeah, so maybe that's with that, maybe that's just part of the
MCAS report.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That on here.
I think it is, or is it like?
Oh, it's right there. I see it. Yeah, it's twenty.
Okay, yeah, there it is.
Twenty-four.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's, yeah.
Maybe in, and we can make a parenthetical, no, in parentheses after that, put um, including subgroup, you know?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, and then we'll get rid of this one. Okay, equity initiative, full school committee quarterly. Is quarterly?
Yeah, we don't need it quarterly.
Yeah, it seems.
I think we had
We were going to do it twice a year, gonna mid-year and the end of year.
Yeah. Okay, so do you want to do?
Annually.
Biannually, okay.
No, semi-annually.
Semi-annually.
You want to say October and May?
I think October's too early.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe January and June or January and May?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, um, business operations facilities and supports, finance annually. Health services, wellness. That makes sense. HR report, now that's new. We haven't really done that. Susan, if you're still on there.
I'm here.
Okay, let me get your thoughts on this one. Is quarterly too aggressive or do?
Uh, yeah, it might be. Maybe just, um,
Did you actually do the first of the year and mid-year?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, Liza.
End of the year because you were
Yep, that makes sense because we onboard so many people at the beginning. And then at the end, you know, there's that comparison, so that makes, that makes sense.
Okay, so we're saying September and like in January, is that right? Or is it January and May?
January would make sense from a budget standpoint.
Yeah.
So are we doing one at the beginning of the school year too? Or at the end of the school year?
I think at the beginning of the school year is too, there's too much, you know, things aren't really settled, if that makes sense.
All right, can we do January and May?
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
And Carrie, there was, there was a report above that we didn't cover, I don't think.
Sorry.
But it was called an employment report. Can we put that one in there?
Sorry, hold on. Employment report.
It was up at the beginning, sorry. There it was, uh, number sixteen.
Yep. What is, what is that?
I don't know.
I don't remember.
Yeah, we can probably just get rid of that and, yeah. All right. Legal actions and expenditures report, this is new as well. John, is this something you can do for the subcommittee quarterly?
Sure, I mean, I can, I can do that anytime. I guess I, the legal actions, it's, you know, there's not a unless that means settlements, I'm not sure exactly what that means, but the expenditures report is just sort of like a forecast. So yes, I can, you know, do that um, as frequently as we meet quarterly. You know, doesn't make sense to do them, you 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 wouldn't do it in September, right? Because nothing's happened. You know, so it's almost like you want to do it, um, you know, in January, then perhaps you do another snapshot in April and then you finish up the year. And then at some point during the summer, you might say, here's where we are budget wise. So, so I guess it is sort of quarterly. I mean, quarterly could work, you know, there's some type of report.
Okay. That sounds good. Um, and then if the finance subcommittee could work with John to figure out what information you're looking for with the legal actions?
Yeah.
And I I would suggest it's legal fees as well as any settlements, as John said, or, but you know, all the, the use of legal counsel.
Yeah, that. Yeah, I agree with that. MCAS, we talked about the annually, opening of schools report, um, full school committee annually. See. Prior year fiscal audit, that's finance annually. Professional development presentation report. See, curriculum annually, we did talk about that at our meeting too. All-time PTO presentation, and I did get a question from one of the PTO presidents about that. This is full school committee in October, um, this year, obviously, we're in October at the end of the month. So are, um, so it won't be October this year, but is that a good time for the PTOs or? It almost seems like it should be later in the year.
I kind of like knowing what they have planned for the year. Like what we have to look forward to.
Yeah. I could go either way on it. Maybe if it's all right with everyone, I'll circle back with them and see what
Yeah.
it makes sense for them. Okay. All right. All right, safety and security presentation to finance annually. That one's a new one, I think. That one's a new one, I think, too, right?
I'm wondering what the connection to finance is, it seems like it might be better for policy or something.
I think it's the, um, capital and facilities piece of the committee. Um. Let's see, school calendar, policy annually. School committee goals, we're doing that now. School committee meetings, we do that in July. Okay, the school handbooks presentation of changes, that's something we'll do starting next July, we're working on that to share with policy. The school improvement plans, those go to the full school committee in the spring. Um.
Sorry, Carrie?
Yeah.
Just on that school handbooks presentation of changes, just, and maybe another one to circle back on, just, I'm wondering if July maybe is too late, because I don't know, like, when they send those to the printer, to have.
Good point. I think.
I don't think they print them anymore, but it's still. Yeah, we've asked the principals when they want an answer.
Okay, John?
Yeah, thanks, Carrie, I just, I wanted to just go back to that, um, security and safety, the safety and security presentation. I, I don't like the idea of any, like, security presentation being an open meeting. It, it, it's, you know, because I, I don't know what we're going to divulge there, or what we're going to say, you know, and I, I think that people have to know. But I, I don't, I don't think, I don't like the idea of that, as any type of open meeting, that's going to be public. Um, you know. So, so, I mean, safety, I mean, we could always talk, you know, safety, I mean, there's a manual, there's a hazard plan, there's stuff like that. But, um, you know, from a security perspective, I really don't like, I, I, I would not feel comfortable having an open meeting to security.
Yeah, that makes sense. Um. Is everyone okay with removing that, or just?
John, wouldn't you have the concern also with legal actions?
If it's just bills, though, but, you know, if you're saying, hey, here's the legal expenses, that's in the forecast, it's, legal actions like that is just an expenditure. And certainly, we wouldn't be talking about settlements, we'd say we had them, but we, you know, there wouldn't be any names, so there's not, not, there wouldn't be a whole bunch of detail in any of these, except for. Clearly, the expenditures, though, Carlos, um, you know, when I do a forecast, we know what the, uh, you know, the, the legal fees are for regular ed, and we know what the legal fees are for. Special ed, but that's, that's about as far as they'll go.
Okay, so I will remove, remove the safety and security presentation. Okay, and we'll check with the principals on the handbooks, school improvement plans, CPAC presentation annually, and that usually happens in June, correct? Do you remember when you did that, Tim?
June.
June, okay.
And do you want that just to be to special ed, or do you want that to be to everyone?
I would like that to be the full committee, if that's right.
Me too, yep.
Going to comment on that, because it seems like the SPAD subcommittee is pretty well aware of what goes on.
Exactly.
Let's see, back throughout the year, it's sort of preaching to the choir.
Right. Definitely. All right, strategic plan, full school committee as appropriate. Yeah, we're going to have to figure that one out as we go, I think. Um, student testing and placement. That's annual. And Jamie, when do you normally do that one?
I think that's Heather, is, is that the AP testing report in the?
Yeah.
Yep.
That's generally in the spring, I believe, I can.
No, it's just, I think it's December.
Is it? Sorry.
Because it's the previous year, it's the previous graduating class.
Oh, you're right, that's right.
That's December?
I'm pretty sure it's around that.
December or January, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just texting Heather to see, just to get it, that looks about right, I think it's the winter.
Okay, superintendent self-evaluation. Um, the tiered focus monitoring presentation. Curriculum annually, vocational programming presentation curriculum annually.
I'm sorry to interrupt, the TFM. Um, that's on a s- six-year cycle.
Okay.
Where, uh, I know there's a mid-cycle review for SPAD, so it's, I think it's every three years, Suzanne, am I making this up? Yeah, okay, it's every three years now. Where we just did our self-assessment, so. That got submitted in the, in the summer, and they're coming on site this year, so when they come, we can give a presentation. Uh, and then, but, but from there, it's actually every, um, I think it's every third year, is it not, Suzanne?
Is it, we're in our mid-cycle right now, so the, the TFM we have this year is the mid-cycle review.
Correct.
Another three years, it'll be the full review, and they're coming in March. Um, we only know roughly around two weeks, um, at this point, but they'll be here, um, sometime in March.
Yeah. And I did just hear back from Heather, it is December or January, depending on the committee's preference on AP testing.
Great, thank you. All right, so the mid-cycle will be March of 2022?
Yeah.
We would probably present in April, but because they are coming in, in March.
Okay. Okay, vocational programming presentation. Wellness program coordinators, that'd be wellness annually. The youth risk behavior survey presentation, wellness annually. Okay.
Carrie, would you mind scrolling up to?
Yeah.
The top for me?
The very top?
Um.
John, did you have something?
Oh, so, if I did have. Scroll down one more, one more line. That's number sixteen, I'm trying to look at that one.
Okay.
It was different on my.
Enrollment.
Enrollment, um, I like to go to the full committee, because.
Oh, yeah.
For finance, we, uh. It's good to get those numbers, especially for kindergarten and. I think we, um, so, the, both the full committee would be my recommendation, if you do that.
That's a good idea, there's a lot of overlap with, with the special ed subcommittee of curriculum with finance, yeah, that's, that makes sense.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jamie?
I just have a question at the bottom, Carrie, about what, what, what is the vocational report? Okay, the, the vocational programming presentat, what is, what is that?
I believe that was things like traces.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, and Jamie, this list was also based on what other districts are doing. And so, so other districts have more robust.
Vocational.
Agreements with VOTEC schools and have their own VOTEC programs. So, we kept it on here just because we want to keep the attention on it. And these don't need to be super long, you know, fifty-page presentations, it's just maintaining the checklist of, that we're up to speed on. Everything we should be up to speed on, so, um. Yeah, if it, and tracking it, making, you know, like, especially vocational, it's like, okay, what are we doing in middle school to inform people about what their opportunities are? For transition? Or what, what are we doing with traces, what are we doing with? You know, letting kids apply for other programs, would we have enrolled, I, I, that's how I thought of it.
Um. Yeah, that was my understanding as well.
Okay.
Um. And I think there are also, for some of these things, there are opportunities to kind of collapse them and, and present them together, so it's not a zillion reports. Mm-hmm. If there's another place where that fits.
Yeah. And I think to Liza's point that, um, for some of the administrators on the phone that are on the call, um, that it, it's not like necessarily. Big formal presentations, I mean, some of it might just be bullet points to.
Yeah.
Come and discuss with the subcommittee.
Yeah, exactly, um. And mainly, and also to just capture everything all in one place, because I think what happens, especially with all the leadership changes we've had. Over the past few years, as things kind of slipped through the cracks, and we, we don't want to lose them, so just trying to find one central place where this can live, and we can tweak it too. Mm-hmm. So. Okay. So. If everyone's good with that, are we voting on this?
That, that's, I mean, Carrie, can I ask a question? In terms of the climate action planning committee. Don't, do you think that we should, um, include that in here to be presented to the, um, finance subcommittee, and? I mean, that's a huge. Thing happen out there, that they're going to need our. You know, input and buy-in, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea to present to the finance subcommittee, um, but I don't think we need to necessarily put it on our report schedule.
Okay.
Unless it's going to be an annual thing. Um. These are the things that are, happen regularly. So. Okay, um, do we want to vote on this?
I feel like there's a couple of things pinned, well, I guess they're just dates.
Yeah.
Because we're going to check.
Yeah, we can hold off till the next meeting, too. I'm fine with either one.
Yeah. I'd be okay with holding off, I, I do wonder, Carrie, if in some of these, and I, I hope I'm not overthinking it. But like, some of them, we have the time of year, and some we just say annual or quarterly, and I'm just wondering if, like. If we, if like, maybe you and Gary want to spend a little time putting. Like, months next to some of them, so that we all of a sudden don't wake up one day in May, when we think we're going to have a sleepy meeting, and be like, oh, my goodness, we have, we have twelve reports we have to hear, because we didn't hear them. Earlier, or to stagger it out a little bit more for the, um, leadership team, too.
Right, that's a good idea.
And then that way for the chair, when they're scheduling meetings, and, and, um, um, our phenomenal executive administrative assistant. Um, you know, it's a better, it's a good way of keeping track of, like, what are we hearing at these, you know, when do we need to put this on the agenda?
Yep, definitely. Okay, yeah, we can do that, and we'll just bring it back to the next meeting. Okay, great, well, thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Liza, for drafting that.
Yeah. That's very helpful. All right, so seven point three is to appoint Carlos De Silva as the Hingham School Committee Delegate to the Massachusetts Asso- Association of School Committees, MASC delegate assembly, which will happen in early November, thank you for volunteering, Carlos.
My pleasure, if there was anybody else interested in going instead of me, please. Say it now.
We're going to take you up in your offer. All right, so seven point four is to review the 2021 proposed MASC resolutions and to act as appropriate, Michelle, did you need to roll off?
Yes, do you mind, I'm so sorry, I'm visiting my dad, and I'm only here for one night, so, if you guys don't mind, I'm going to drop off.
No, no, have a good night, say hi to your dad.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Okay, so these were, these we shared with you last week, um, so I'm not going to read all of them, we'll just go for the therefore be resolved in each one, and, um, and we can discuss it, um, how we've. Followed that, so resolution one is dedicated, actually, I'll pull this up, too. Okay, dedicated funding for school-based clinics and services. And the resolution is that mask support proposals that would establish dedicated funding for school-based physical health and mental health clinics and services. Um. Does anyone have strong feelings either way on this one?
Um. I found this a little odd. Because students are minors, and that for their medical, they need to have a parent or guardian. Like, signing off on any medical care that they get, and so. I wasn't really sure how. Um. How this was going to work. So, um, it's, and I, I under, it's brought by Framingham, which is a very different type of district than we are. But, um. I. I, I was a little confused from a practical standpoint of how you service minors. Without the guardian, unless the guardian was going to be, meet them there and do it, so. This one was a little odd to me.
Yeah, I didn't love this one either, I, I think it's, it's kind of a good idea, and I understand why.
Yeah.
I worry about it becoming another, um, unfunded mandate.
Yeah.
Where they're, you know, providing some funding, tying it to a services, another service that schools have to provide, and then, but not, then not fully funding it, I think there's a track record there, so.
Yeah.
I kind of did, I did not like that one, but. Does anyone want to support this resolution?
Sorry. Any, anything that deals with social emotional issues, uh, you know. I am in full support, and I think that this would sort of like, you know, address a devocating for more funds. Um, so, you know. There is resources allocated to our guidance counselors. Um. You know, a lot of those services already may, may be covered under Medicare anyway, anyways, I'm not sure. Um, but as far as I am concerned, it's, it's just allocation of more funds for social emotional issues.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that it's, this funding would be to establish school-based physical health and mental health clinics and services, it wouldn't be extra money for guidance. Um. Okay, do you want to make a motion, Carlos?
I'll move that we, um. We vote in favor of supporting, uh, resolution number one, dedicating funds for school-based clinics and services.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, so, all right, and we'll do a roll call of, of Jen. Is Jen? Did we lose her, too? Uh, okay, Ness?
Hi.
Uh, Carlos?
Hi.
Tim?
Hi.
Liza?
No.
I'm a no as well, so three to two, we're supporting it. Okay, resolution two is homework gap and the Wi-Fi internet access, and the resolution is that the Mass Association of School Committees. File for and support legislation, which seeks to provide free broadband and internet to all K through twelve students in Massachusetts. Somebody want to make a motion on this one?
I'll, I'll move that we, um, approve resolution number two, homework gap and Wi-Fi internet access.
All right.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, um, and any discussion on this one?
Um, I, I, I just want to add, it says to include homes of K through twelve students, so it's not necessarily every K through twelve student, but. Um, at least. I, I support this effort of expanding. That, but, um. I don't know if we get, like, I don't know if our community is eligible for the E-Rate program, um, but I support this effort of making sure there's internet for as many people as possible.
Okay, uh, so we'll do a roll call, Jen?
Hi, sorry.
Ness?
Hi.
Carlos?
Hi.
Tim?
Hi.
Liza?
Hi.
I'm an I as well. Okay, resolution three is IDEA Full Funding Act. Um. And the resolution is the Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls upon the Massachusetts Congressional delegation to reintroduce and promote the passage of the IDEA Full Funding Act. Um, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to support the IDEA Full Funding Act Resolution.
A second.
Thank you. Uh, any discussion on this one? I fully support this one, um, so Jen?
Hi.
Ness?
Hi.
Carlos?
Hi.
Tim?
Hi.
Liza?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. Resolution four is about recess, and the resolution is that the Massachusetts. Is that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees support legislation. Current bills Senate three eighty-three and House six ninety-five calling for at least twenty minutes of uninterrupted. Supervised, safe and unstructured free play recess per day, which cannot be excluded from structured learning time requirements. It may not increase the total number of hours required in the school year for Massachusetts elementary schools. Do we have a motion?
Move to support resolution number four on recess.
A second.
Thanks. Any discussion on this one? Okay, all in favor, Jen?
Hi.
Ness?
Hi.
Carlos?
Hi.
Tim?
Hi.
Liza?
Hi.
I'm an I as well. Resolution number five is zero tolerance policies and the resolution is. That the MASC call upon the legislature to enact or amend legislation to encourage the use of restorative therapeutic. And educational approaches to incidents whenever possible. Over the use of zero tolerance, tolerance policies in order to, to provide students the best chance to remain in public school systems of the Commonwealth. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to support. MASC resolution number five.
A second.
Okay, thank you. All, any discussion on this one? Yeah, all in favor, Jen?
Hi.
Ness?
Hi.
Carlos?
Hi.
Tim?
Hi.
Liza?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. Resolution number six is alternative to MCAS. The resolution is that the Mass Association of School Committees call upon the legislature. To establish a commission to research and analyze alternative means for students. To demonstrate academic achievement, which can be used to satisfy graduation requirements for individual students. And accountability standards for Massachusetts public schools and school districts. Do we have a motion for that one?
I'll make a motion to support resolution number six, alternative to MCAS.
One second.
Any discussion on this one? Okay, all in favor, Jen?
Hi.
Ness? Carlos?
Hi.
Tim?
Hi.
Liza?
Hi.
I'm an I as well. Resolution seven is school committees and receivership. And the resolution is that the MASC. File for and support legislation which seeks to preserve the authority of the elected body, the school committee. As provided in Mass General Law, Chapter sixty-nine, Section one K, by deleting the words "and school committee" as noted. And by inserting the following, nothing in this section shall permit the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education or the Commissioner. Or to remove the authority of the school committee. Be it further resolved that MASC support local initiatives and legislation to restore school committee oversight of the superintendent and or receiver. Including but not limited to goal setting, performance review and the evaluation process. We've motioned on that one.
I move that we approve resolution number seven is school committee, uh, school committees and receivership. Uh, you all may have read what happened in Lawrence. Uh, they, they are under receivership for many years and they are actually protesting on the streets right now.
Yeah, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, Jen?
Hi.
Ness?
Well.
Carlos?
Hi.
Tim?
Hi.
Liza?
Hi.
I'm an I as well. Resolution number eight, electric school buses. Uh, the resolution is that, that MASC petition Congress to appropriate thirty billion dollars. For improving the electrical supply infrastructure and providing electric buses and charging stations. Do we have a motion?
The climate action guru here makes that motion.
Was that a motion?
There is a motion. Reflect that on the minutes.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, any discussion on this one? Okay, all in favor, Jen?
Hi.
Ness?
Hi.
Carlos?
Big I.
Tim?
Hi.
Liza?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. Last one, the resolution nine prohibiting the use of Native American mascots. The resolution is therefore be resolved that the Mass, MASC support legislation calling for regulations prohibiting public schools from using an athletic. Team name, logo or mascot, which names refers to, represents or is associated. With Native Americans, including aspects of Native American cultures and specific Native, Native American tribes. And there is asterisks on that and it's saying that it would not permit prohibit. A Native American tribe as identified by the Commission on Indian Affairs. Located within the boundaries of the Commonwealth from choosing to use a native-related name or logo. For a sports team comprised of its tribal members, including a tribal school or intermural league. Or from that tribal nation giving explicit consent for a school to use their particular tribal name. So, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt MASC resolution number nine.
A second?
A second.
Thank you. Any discussion on this one? Yeah, all in favor, Jen?
Hi.
Ness?
Hi.
Carlos?
Hi.
Tim?
Hi.
Liza?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. Alright, these are done, thank you very much. Carlos, represent as well.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so number eight is subcommittee and project reports. We will start with Jen today.
Yeah. So I participated in the last of the three. School visiting workshops, foster visiting workshop, working groups on October seventh. And that was run by Vista Design and Raymond Design Associates. And then we also had a policy subcommittee meeting on. Last Wednesday, which was thirteen, where we discussed our short-term and long-term goals and we also. Discussed and started a draft for potential therapy animal policy. And then we will be meeting again next week to work more on the draft and we hope to report back to the committee with a first read. Um, so.
Great, thank you, Jen. Ness?
Um, yeah, we have some warrants in the packet as related to the finance subcommittee. And the equity working group met for the first time on October thirteenth. And we're gonna be starting to meet every other week again.
Great, thank you, Ness. Carlos?
So, the school council will be meeting next week, once again. And the climate, uh, climate action planning committee. Met last week and we'll be meeting again on the twenty-seventh. Uh, we created two, uh, well, several subcommittees, each one of us a part of two. So, um, there's plenty of meetings there in one month, more, more than the school committees, uh, in the next six months. But you know what, they, they approved the charter and they are marching along. Most likely, uh, the regulations will not be ready. For town meeting, um, you know, they have been. You know, tasked with developing the rules, uh, moving forward, so I, I think that, that will not be done. For another, you know, year and a half or two years. So again, I think the main thing there is just to continue meeting and, and defining, uh, what, uh, you know. Net zero really is for many. So eventually I will come back and report, uh, and, you know, more. And what's taking place, but right now we are at the beginning of our creation.
Great, thank you, Carlos.
Thank you.
Next is Tim.
I have had a board meeting and the dividing into different projects and. Committees, uh, but there's nothing really to report out of that yet.
Great, thank you. Liza?
Salary negotiations is meeting tomorrow for a negotiation with the teachers' union. On COVID working conditions and hopefully, so that's all moving forward productively. And then the wellness committee, we met last week and we reviewed as, as I showed the, our function and. Our goals and, um, so we're gonna be. Following up, I'm gonna follow up with the athletic director so that we can help fulfill the self-study. Results and, and help him with that and then we're going to delve into a survey for all the booster. Groups, um, to acquire the information from each of them about their organizations and their budgets. And understanding how they work. And then. The other thing is, oh, Ness was going to look at, get the information about the athletic budget, so we can then look at. The budget of athletics and how equitable it is across the different sports. And then Michelle's gonna follow up with counseling and student services. To be our conduit on getting the more information about social emotional work that's going on in the schools and. You know, we, we've just heard the concerns with the need for the therapy dog and then, you know, other needs we're hearing from students. And so we want to get a real understanding of what's going on that. And get some reporting back so that we can support students appropriately. So, we're gonna meet again. November ninth.
Great, thank you. I attended the PRS school council meeting this afternoon, uh, which is great, and we looked over the school improvement plan, the goals. They have five goals and three of them are pretty well fleshed out. But the two that are not, and we worked on today, were the restorative justice goal and equity and belonging goal. So we kind of went through some of that and had some ideas and we'll circle back again, the next meeting is November eighth. Let's see, the curriculum subcommittee met to go over the functions and goals and I will be reaching out to that subcommittee so we can meet again and, and get to work. And then the Hingham Unity Council is doing a, let's talk disability and neurodiversity on Wednesday at seven o'clock. Um, it's, it's a great panel to just, a day in the life of your neighbor with disabilities, so. If you, you have to pre-register to go, it's free, but you can pre-register on hinghamunity.org if you want to go to that. So next is other items as may not reasonably known.
Carrie, while we're doing updates, I forgot that Michelle isn't here, can I do a quick CPAC plug?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
On next Monday, so a week from tonight, they're having a speaker to their meeting, Sarah Wishner from the Landmark School. Because it is dyslexia awareness month, so we'll give some strategies to work with, uh, the kids who have dyslexia, so. You come, that's gonna be, I think, seven o'clock next Monday.
That's great, thank you for doing that. So, other items as may not reasonably known forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting, does anyone have anything? Okay, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor? Jen?
Hi.
Ness?
Hi.
Carlos?
Hi.
Tim?
Hi.
Liza?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. Thank you to everyone who hung, hung in there with us, this is one of our longest meetings in a while, so. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alright, have a good night, everyone.